Okay, you're all set. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission meeting to order Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Grab that number two.
Oh, you know, geez, want me to start over again?
Yes.
Take two. All right, I'd like to call the, good evening, I'd like to call the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission to order Tuesday, September thirteenth, at, looks like seven fourteen P. M. We'll start with introducing commissioners to my left. William Profetto.
Jim Ewan.
Leslie Givinelli.
And I'm Ronald Rotolo. Thank you. Correspondence for review, July twelfth, two thousand, I'm sorry, July, yeah, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Everybody should have received a copy in your packet. Looking for a motion or any corrections?
I'll make a motion to accept a minute as read.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, so moved. All right, for receipt, we don't have anything. New business? Don't see anything either. Old business?
Unless anybody has something they want to bring up?
New business? Usually old's before new. Why'd you switch these up?
Same as, I didn't switch anything up.
Okay. Old business? None. Enforcement officers report?
The only thing that I have is, I did do a couple administrative reviews for small time upland review area cases, sheds, pools, things like that. Other than that, I don't have much.
All right. For discussion, property known as eighty-eight Marsh Hill Road, submitted by Michael Frisbee, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC to construct an eight thousand three hundred and eighty-four square foot community travel center and two thousand, twenty-three thousand five hundred square foot E. V. showroom. Development purposes, thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-sevens of the disturbance of the upland review area. Who is going to present this evening?
Yep, and just name and address for the record, please.
All right, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Anthony Capuano. I'm a senior project engineer with Soli Engineering. Address is five oh one Main Street, Monroe, Connecticut, here on behalf of the applicant, Michael Frisbee, Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings. Here to present for eighty-eight Marsh Hill Road. You can go to the next one.
Slide?
Yeah. So here's just a brief overview of the location of the property in the town of Orange, located right along the I ninety-five corridor, kind of right in between U. I. and Southern Connecticut Gas on Marsh Hill Road, right near the West Haven Town Line. You can go to the next one, too. So here's an overview of the site. Existing conditions, site is currently occupied by an existing industrial building with associated gravel areas, paving areas, outdoor storage of vehicles, mechanical equipment on concrete pads, existing stormwater infrastructure. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see there's also a thirty-six hundred square foot wetland pocket where about thirteen hundred of, thirteen hundred square feet of it, sorry, is located on our property with a total upland review area of around thirty-four thousand square feet. The existing conditions of this wetland, we had a soils report done back in February of two thousand twenty-one by Jim McManus on behalf of JMM Wetland Consultants, who reported that the upland soils in the area, as well as the wetland soils, were classified as very disturbed soils, and the regulated area itself was classified as a very disturbed, isolated wooded swamp with a dense woody understory. And there was also signs that there were multiple reinforced concrete pipes that were discharging into the wetland, likely from, from the street side. You can go to the next one, too. So here's an overview of our site plan for the site. As had been previously pointed out in the agenda, we're proposing to develop an eight thousand four hundred thirty-seven square foot gas station slash convenience store, which also known as a community travel center, as per a recent regulation amendment with Planning and Zoning Commission to classify this development as a community travel center, which is now permitted in the zoning district of aisle two or industrial light, number two district. The gas station itself has eight fueling pumps for a total of sixteen fueling stations, as well as a separate electric vehicle charging canopy, which can be seen directly to the north of the gas station fueling canopy. Currently, it has space for eight electric vehicle charging spaces with some additional oversized parking spaces, both under the canopy as well as to the north of it. We're expecting, since this is like an industrial area near the FedEx distribution facility, there might be some Sprinter vans, other larger vehicles that would be using the site, so we felt the need to provide some oversized spaces. There's twenty-one of them total on the site. As for the building itself, as I said, gas convenience store, we also have an ice cream stand inside of it, coffee shop, as well as a sandwich shop, and the coffee shop and sandwich shop kind of jointly share a drive-through, which you can see wrapping around the south side of the building, has a total of twelve queuing spaces for the drive-through with the current design. For the other building on site, it's a proposed electrical, electric vehicle showroom and service center. The point of the building would be for different tenants to come in, show their vehicles, different electric vehicles, and then whoever's using the site would have the option to take a look at the vehicles. They wouldn't be able to buy them onsite, they would purchase them online, but it's a nice building. There's actually, if you see on the bottom side of the building, that drive that comes into the bottom is actually the entrance to the service station, and as well on the second floor of the building, there's a outdoor patio event space, which is kind of a nice feature for the building to have. As far as zoning compliance, everything was designed to be compliant with setbacks, impervious coverage, landscaping, all that sort. So we can move on to the next one as well. So here's a look at our grading and drainage plan, designed in accordance with the two thousand four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual, as well, as well as the two thousand Connecticut D. O. T. Drainage Manual. Improvements on the site include a grass line drainage swale towards the south side of the gas station convenience center, catch basins with hooded outlets and two-foot sumps, additional drainage manholes across the site, a water quality unit, located right, I guess, north of the wetland, right near that level spreader over there, as well as twenty-four individual two-foot underground storage chambers located in the spin circle area in front of the electric vehicle showroom. In terms of existing drainage patterns, the entire site currently, there's high points along the southwest corner, along the northern property line, and along the eastern property line, and everything from that site is draining down towards that densely wooded swamp wetland area in the south area of the site. Currently travels overland. There's a few catch basins on site, which also discharge stormwater into that, into that wetland through a, an outlet, sort of right down by where our level spreader is. For the proposed conditions, we broke it up into three separate individual drainage areas. So there's a portion of about half an acre, which drains directly into that grass line drainage swale below the gas station convenience store, which that swale provides some treatment for water quality volume in that area. A separate area travels through the stormwater conveyance system on site, and eventually through that water quality unit, which was sized to treat the water quality flow for the drainage area. And then the third drainage area would be the roof area for the electric, electric vehicle showroom, which discharges into those twenty-four individual underground chambers, and then eventually discharges across that level spreader into the wetlands. This site was studied for all storm events from the one, two, five, ten, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred year storm events, and the resultant was a reduction in peak flows for all those storm events. In terms of earthwork across the site, that wetland is around an elevation of eighty point five, so we had to fill the site up a little bit to provide enough coverage for the underground system to properly discharge through gravity flow into that wetland, as well as making that connection with Marsh Hill Road work at a compliance slope from the driveway in to the site. We can move on to the next one, too. This is a look at the phase one of our soil erosion sediment control plan, so this would involve the demo of the existing building, the existing parking area, existing drainage infrastructure, and utility concrete pads. Included in phase one, we've got geotextile silt fence with additional hay bale backing protection directly abutting the wetlands. We have temporary sediment traps, you can see two of them located there, which were sized based on requirements from the two thousand two C. T. Deep Soil Erosion Sediment Control Guidelines. We also have an anti-tracking construction entrance in the same location as the existing entrance to the site. Additional stone check dams for diversion swales, as well as inlet protection on the existing drainage structures. Then we can go to the next one. And then this is the Soil Erosion Sediment Control Plan for the proposed construction phase. So again, geotextile silt fence along the property edges with the hay bale backing along the wetland edge, additional inlet protection on the proposed drainage structures as well, and still that anti-tracking construction entrance over the location of the new proposed entrance. And then we can go to the next one. So this is a look at our utility plan. So the site currently has access to public utilities within Marsh Hill Road, including gas, water, public sewer, electric. The sewer connection for the gas station convenience store, there's a grease trap proposed since there'll be some kitchen operations going on in there. We're proposing for everything to gravity drain to the northeast corner of the property, where we'll connect into the existing public sewer across the street within the, an existing easement from the town on a public sewer line there, kind of towards the northeast corner of the site. And then we can go to the next one. And then here's a brief look at our landscape plan, designed with non-invasive, drought resistant, and generally native species. We tend to go for a ratio of around eighty to twenty of native to non-native species, and it was designed to complement both the site design and the building design on site. And then a look at our lighting plan, which was designed with L. E. D. fixtures, dark sky compliant, and aiming to, aiming to provide around, or close to, if not zero, foot candles at all corners of the property. And then here's just another look at the site plan, because I want to go into some comments we received at the end of last week from the fire marshal regarding circulation of fire trucks and access to the site. So this is just a brief look at the existing site plan, and then if you go to the next slide, these were some modifications we made, based on some of the comments we received. So that included designated fire lanes, which we're showing, one behind the gas convenience store, and three additional smaller lanes around the E. V. showroom. Additionally, we provided a secondary access to the site, just north of our entrance, which would be just for emergency vehicles, as well as, there was concern over a dead end at the bottom side of the electric vehicle showroom, so we provided an additional connection from there over to the gas convenience store. And we'd probably do this with some sort of reinforced turf or pervious pavement, so as not to increase any of the impervious coverage, as it had already been previously designed. Yeah, I think that's the last slide. So I think just as an overall, I mean, the existing site, generally, a lot of impervious area, we're relatively close to the impervious coverage that was existing on the site, and our limits of disturbance are pretty close to the existing limits of disturbance in terms of proximity to the wetlands. And we just feel overall that with these site improvements and the addition of water quality measures, such as the drainage swale, the water quality unit, and the underground chambers, that it would result in an overall improvement to the function of the wetlands on site. So I'll give the floor for any questions. Yeah.
What provisions do you have for the runoff from the gas station? Capture oil drains, gas, that sort of thing?
For like around the gas canopy?
Well, the whole run, wherever rain comes on that area, where is it going to go? And how are you going to prevent any contamination from gas, oil, such, et cetera?
So the design is to keep everything from the gas canopy from flowing elsewhere on site, so?
If you want me to go back and forth, let me know.
Yeah.
Let me know when.
Yeah, you can go back one more. Yeah, so everything from the impervious area around the gas canopy is proposed to enter the stormwater conveyance system through one of several catch basins around it, and as a protection measure for, before it enters the wetland, it's designed to flow through a water quality unit located at the bottom of the site to treat any of the contaminants and provide any suspended solid removal, or anything of that nature, before it enters the wetlands. And there's also a positive limiting barrier around the limits of the canopy to prevent anything from entering the system as well.
Could you explain the details of the water quality unit?
Yeah, so the water quality unit, it's a hydrodynamic separator, which is a unit that, I mean, as sediment and other contaminants can enter it, it effectively removes up to eighty percent of the total suspended solids that are within the runoff, so that any of that stuff is removed before it enters the wetlands.
And how is that maintained?
So there's typically a long, like a long-term operation and maintenance manual that comes along with those units. It's developed by the manufacturer, and in most of these cases, that's provided to the long-term property manager, so that it's maintained on a basis as recommended by the manufacturer. So every certain amount of months, it's gone through and cleaned and checked to make sure that it's still functioning properly.
Which is exactly the fueling area?
Sorry?
Which is the fueling area, exactly?
Oh, that, that one right there.
I thought that was the electric charging area.
That one's just north of it. So where those four boxes are, those are the actual electric vehicle chargers.
So that's the electric?
Yes, yes.
For the record. So, yeah, we just got to be able to pick up everybody. For the record, Luke Morrow with Soli Engineering, senior project manager and also professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. So the intent for this development is, Mr. Frisbee is aware that we're moving towards a society that's getting away from combustion gasoline fuel engines, towards E. V. Whether we want it or not, it's coming, right? So he's, in terms of looking for the future, he's trying to provide an experience here where there's also. Sorry. There's also a rain, a rain-covered canopy for people that are not only filling up with gasoline, but also to charge their, you know, their electric vehicle cars as they become more prominent. Hence also why he's proposing this electric vehicle showroom on site as well. When there's legislation passed to allow that, in the state of Connecticut, we'll have, you know, some mechanism to maybe at some point actually sell cars from the showroom, but it's just not at that point right now. So like Anthony said, there is, there's space for eight, charging of eight electric vehicles right now. They're called E. V. Fast Chargers. As I understand them, they can, they can fully charge a vehicle in about ten to twelve minutes. It's like a third generation, which, you know, you wouldn't be able to get that kind of power at your house. It would take several hours. So, you know, he, he's planning for, you know, commercial grade, you know, potentially delivery vans that may go to electric power or something, let, you know, battery-powered cars in the future. So the intent is to provide E. V. customers with a similar experience that you would get with the protection of a rain canopy and something like that effect, as, treat them as you would equal to a gas, gasoline customer.
Commissioners, have any other questions?
On the water quality unit, it, data is collected, and then how is it reported?
So there is a, and I know there's, they do data collection, New Jersey, there's a lab and stuff like that. So there is, what they do is, they'll run it through a testing lab for a certain flow rate. And what they'll do is, when they, when they run it, you know, when they're in the lab, they'll, it'll come up with a percentage of the total suspended solids within the runoff that, as they enter through, they'll evaluate what kind of enters through, and then what exits, and they figure out a ratio of what's actually collected. And what they'll do is, each unit is sized for a certain flow rate, which we have to calculate based on the soil erosion and sediment control manual. It's got to be sized for a certain amount of the impervious coverage on the site to capture and treat that flow. So based on how high the flow is, we would spec a certain size hydrodynamic separator to collect and treat that flow. So the higher volume, the higher rate of flow you need to treat, the larger the size of the hydrodynamic separator you need to spec.
So the proprietor of the convenience store is going to be responsible for collecting that data and then reporting it?
Wouldn't be, wouldn't be responsible for collecting the data. So the data is, is prepared and collected by the person, by the manufacturing company. They have, they have produced spec sheets and whatnot that say, based on our lab testing, for this size flow, we can, we can meet the, the requirements to remove eighty percent of the suspended solids from the runoff. And so there's a mechanism on the top to collect, you know, cans, you know, bottles, larger debris, sticks, that kind of stuff. And then there's a settling chamber where it would settle out, you know, sand and grit and other kind of stuff, and filters that would settle out some of the smaller particles and, you know, oil and that kind of stuff, if it were to get into the system. So as part of their specifications, they recommend, you know, either an annually or biannually maintenance program to clean, clean the device to make sure that it's performing as, you know, as recommended. Just important to note, as we understand it, there, we don't believe there are any water quality treatment measures on site at this time. Anthony mentioned it's mostly overland flow to the wetlands to the south, but there's some storage area there, there's gravel, you know, we don't believe there's any kind of curbing that's kind of stopping getting collected into a, you know, an actual, you know, you know, a piping system that's getting treated before it outlets to the, to the wetland pocket there. So in terms of, you know, kind of directing it into a system and treating it before it gets there, this should be a significant improvement over what's kind of, how it's functioning, you know, today.
Do you have separators in all the catch basins?
We have, we don't have separators. We have two-foot sumps?
Yeah.
So we have two-foot sumps that would basically collect grit with a hood on it, so that larger particles, such as, you know, paper cups or, you know, larger sticks, wouldn't be able to kind of get through the system. And then they're all routed to a final pipe that would serve as the final treatment measure before it gets to the wetlands. So the final. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the final water quality treatment chamber is this one here. So everything is collected, it's treated in one location.
Okay.
Specifically because of cost, whereas a manhole would typically cost you maybe three or four grand, you're talking fifteen, twenty grand for one of these. So, you know, it's just prudent to kind of route it to one spot where you can treat it, and maintenance-wise, you only have to worry about cleaning one structure in its size to, you know, handle that water quality volume.
And that treated effluent goes into sewage?
The treated, the, the treated water, the treated stormwater runoff goes, discharges to the wetlands. After it's, you know, after it's cleaned.
Okay.
Yep. Anything, only thing that would go into the sewer would be, you know, runoff from the, you know, in turn your plumbing to toilets, sinks, any grease waste and stuff like that, which is also treated before it gets into the sewer system. But this, this would be strictly for stormwater runoff in the parking lot and the roof.
Snow pile storage anywhere? Good-sized site, lot of plowing? Going to melt it on site?
You know, the, the intent would be to store, you know, the snow in the extremities, likely in the northeast corner. I mean, we provide as much parking as we do because it's required per code. I mean, in reality, it's likely not going to need that many. You know, you've, you've been to a gas station, there's not more than five or six cars at the convenience.
That's a good-sized site for a gas station.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, you know, we, we would, there's some flat areas, you know, at the, in the northeast corner of the site, you know, that would be preferred for, for snow stockpiling and likely, you know, with the intention that, unless it was a larger storm, to try to keep it off the paved area, so we don't have to.
Because that melting runoff is just going to end up going into the wetlands.
Sure.
Without being treated. If they start plowing down to the, to the south.
Sure, yeah, and if it's. You know, and, and we would be, you know. You know, and, and we would be, you know, we, we wouldn't be opposed to a condition that snow stockpiling had to occur, you know, on the northeast corner, as further away from the wetlands as possible. I mean, in, as a matter of just having to provide that emergency connection point for the, for the fire department over there, we can't, we wouldn't be able to stockpile and allow for the emergency access around the building. So inherently, you know, we can't, we can't put snow in the way so that the fire truck can get by.
Well, there's no access to the southern side for a vehicle anyways, right? Other than around the building for the fire department, correct?
There, so, can you go to the, so in our proposed case, there, we would continue, provide a continuous loop. This would be in the form of a grass paper over there. So in terms of snow stockpiling, in order to maintain that emergency access around the building, we wouldn't be able to stockpile snow and still allow for, it's, it's 22-foot wide is what the fire marshal asked for. So we would, we would have to still stockpile, you know, further away from that, away from the building limits.
Any other questions?
It's a big site.
Sure is.
About four acres.
How much is it?
Four acres.
Four acres.
The intent, it would be, I mean, we're, we're showing it as one phase, but the intent would be, start with construction of what we'd call Phase 1, would be likely the gas convenience with the, with the fueling canopy and the EV canopy. So those three pads, if you will, on the right side, and then, and then proceed with, you know, Phase 2, with the electric vehicle showroom, you know, subsequent to that. No, no set timeframe, but likely he would get that up and running before he proceeded with--
I was, I was thinking in terms of snow. That's what I meant by a big site.
Gotcha.
So much parking and the northeast corner looks awful tiny.
They're going to have to use loaders to move all the snow up to that end.
And he, and he's, I mean, he's familiar, he's got a couple sites, you know, none of these electric vehicle showrooms, but he's got one in Hartford, he's got one in New Britain, we got one just recently permanent end field with this footprint, we're going for one in Newington. So he's familiar with, you know, you know, the last thing you want when you're a gas station is snow in the way of people trying to, you know, to fuel up. So he's got a, you know, a means of--
We're not worried about them fueling up. We're worried about the wetlands.
I got you, I got you.
You can pile it up by the pumps, we're not worried about that.
And, you know, in terms of parking, where, when we, we removed five parking spaces in order to provide for the emergency access up in the northeast corner and then south of the building, we're actually parked exactly to code. So we wouldn't be able to actually reduce any of the parking spaces without requiring a variance. So we're kind of, you know, we're kind of limited in that regard as well.
I think we need a stockpiling plan, more detail. And is the electrical charging station and their fueling station both canopy?
Correct.
Downspouts are just going to discharge to grade, or?
That would be, is that, downspouts and canopy are at grade? Or do we, do we capture them from, do you remember?
It depends on how they can, is routed.
Okay.
Usually be underground.
Okay. So typically we capture it, because, and it's clean runoff on top of the canopy. There shouldn't be any sand or grit or anything in there. So that would connect into the storm drainage system. I mean, we can, we can also, we're showing, Jack, can you go back to the grading plan quick? Number, keep going, couple more. We also have--
That's great.
So, yeah, we, I mean, it's, it's a little, there may be some potential for, for some snow storage over here, but you can, I mean, you can kind of see the grade outlines, but it's, the topography over there, it's not like really a flat area to kind of, where we would have that, you know, flatter area to do snow storage in the northeast corner.
I just agree that we'd want to see a plan.
I think that's a good idea.
Something showing some type of wood rail that they can't plow up and over, so the snow sits, sits there, especially with a loader or anything else? Even if it's just a low-guard rail style wood rail or something?
Okay.
Trust me, I plow. You push it wherever you can push it.
Okay. So, so basically a protective measure in the wetlands area?
The wetland area.
Okay, that's fine.
Along with the plan that Jim asked for, you know? Any other questions, comments, concerns? We need to table this for some more information?
We could. It's, it's up to the commission. We could make it a condition of approval that they submit a plan showing snow stockpiling plan and everything else that the commission requested. So we could go that option if the commission feels as though they'd like to keep them. Of course, we could do that. Typically, this is something that, you know, they could submit to my office, and then I could go from there and based on our, our comments, let them know if it's adequate or not.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion at that point with the conditions? Jack can review them at that point, make sure that meets all our standards, get them in front of us. I'll make a motion to approve it with the snow conditions. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All right, any other discussion?
This would include also all standards of, standards--
Standards, yep.
--conditions for an approval here, just to put that on the record.
Need to get one of those sheets so we can just--
I'll send, I'll, I'll send it over.
Always just have one on hand.
Yeah, I, I probably do have one somewhere in here.
Yep. All right, here, no other discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, so moved.
For your decision.
Thank you. Public hearings, we don't have, we have zero, according to this.
Zero.
And it looks like we don't have any other business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
8:46. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
7:47.
Aye.
7:47, yeah.
I don't know, I'm looking at that clock.